I'd like to welcome everybody to this Commissioner meeting, this new year. If you'll join with me and say anything, I would appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll start by introducing everybody to my far left. We have Administrator Schroeder. We have our new Commissioner, Commissioner Pash. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Myself, Sue Gold. Then Commissioner Boyce. And then we have Council Huddle and Administrative Assistant John Jeswood. So, welcome. So, let's get started. Are there any amendments to the agenda that anybody has?
None here.
None, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Whoop, we have a question.
Just a clarification, go ahead and do the motion, but...
Okay.
Are we gonna let him vote yet?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay, call for the question.
Aye.
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 It's not so much an agenda, but the resolutions and orders that were drafted were put in without any titles on some of the Commissioners, and so, once you elect officers, Brenda Starbird will be watching and changing the orders to reflect the positions after you elect officers.
Oh, you mean Chair, et cetera?
Exactly, on the signature lines. It's a slight technicality, didn't think it's an amendment to the agenda, but I just wanted to let you know that we'll be making changes on the fly today.
Okay, next, we have election of Board of Commissioners Officers for 2019. We'll start with Chair. I nominate Commissioner Boyce. Is there a second?
Knew I was gonna get ousted the first moment, though, but thank you.
Any other nominations?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna move to nominate Commissioner Chris Pash for the 2019, Chair of the Board of Curry County Commissioners.
Okay, do we have a second? I'll second that. Any discussion on that? Okay, let's call for the question.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
We're gonna load you up, buddy.
Okay, do I hear any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Court Boyce for Vice Chair.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
No one got one.
Okay, so, Chris, since you are the new Chair, what we'll do is, you'll just take over this meeting, I assume, and then, next time, you'll be in this chair because we'll have to move all the computers and stuff, so...
Good plan.
Do you have a chance?
Yeah, good plan.
Okay. So, I'll let you take over the meeting.
Well, I think what's next is public comments.
And here are the public comments.
Okay. Number one is, Ms. Rose, Nancy Sue Rose.
My name is Nancy Sue Rose, I live in Gold Beach. One of the purposes to have a consistent approach to county, of a county administrator, is to have consistent, um, let me start over. One of the purposes of a county commissioner was to have a consistent approach between the Commissioners and county staff, rather than having to answer to three bosses who cannot confer about county business except in meetings. Also, to have someone to take care of administrative duties, so the three Commissioners can handle the duties during the limited time that you have together during meetings. So, from one citizen's viewpoint, having a county administrator, the two that we have had especially, have been successful. Please do not undo the good work that has been done thus far. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Barnes.
David Barnes, live in Gold Beach. I just wanted to say congratulations to Commissioner Pash.
Thank you.
Both on your election and as your choice as the Chair of this Board. I look forward to a good year in front of us and moving the county forward. One of the things, as a citizen, that I'd like to request is that the public comment for meetings policy, I'd like to see that expand a little bit. I've been over to the hospital board meetings, and they have numerous opportunities during their meetings for the public to speak out on things that have happened during the course of the meeting. Many times, sitting through these meetings, there's things I'd like to be able to comment about that I'm unable to, because I haven't filled out a speaker slip before the meeting begins. And just as a member of the public, you know, it's your job to listen to what we have to say to you, and I'd like more of us to have more opportunity to do that, you know? Maybe add another one at the, another public comment session at the end of the meeting or something like that, so the public can voice what their opinions on what's happened. But, you know, as I said, I look forward to, you know, moving forward, Curry County forward together, and congratulations, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, sir.
Yeah, just comment on this, sometimes people come from Brookings or Port Orford, and if they don't get here by 10 o'clock or prior, just a few minutes prior, they're not allowed to speak, and I've been in strong opposition against that and to relax those rigid policies, and so, public participation, and I don't care generally how long it takes, I think it's something we really have to welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next, we have Brian Grumman, please.
That's kind of a personal objective, I'm on the Citizens Committee right now to help come up with a revised budget or means to raise cash, so that we can be cash positive. I don't envy anybody sitting up in front of me today as to what we have to do this year. There's gonna be a lot of water, a lot of difficulty, a very hard year, we're gonna have to find ways to manage our costs, at the same time, we find ways to raise money so we can become cash positive as a county. So, the comment I'd like to make today, I know you'll be making some decisions on personnel going forward, and I want to, I think, say that I hope that you consider all the consequences of decisions, what we have to get done between now and the fall, as far as getting something on the ballot that we can get passed through people, that means we have to go out and sell people on what we're doing, there's a lot that has to be done. So, I hope that every decision is made with due diligence on the consequences of those decisions and how we would follow through then to get the things done that we need to get done before the election in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
All right, that's the end of the public comments. Number E on the consent agenda, appoint the Coos-Curry Housing Authority Board, appointment?
So, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? That's to appoint...
I move that we approve the consent agenda, and that's to appoint Lauren Paulson to the Housing Authority Board, Coos-Curry Housing Authority Board.
Thank you, Commissioner Gold, I will second that. Mine just finally popped up there. I know Mr. Paulson, and I think he would be a wonderful contributor to that very important board, to South Coast.
Is there any further comments?
None here.
Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving forward to F, regular agenda, appointment to the BCRAA, which is the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, Mr. Schroeder?
So, there's been a request by the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority to appoint a current Board or Commissioner to a member which will serve starting on January 2nd, and just for clarification, for the Board's sake, they did cancel their meeting that was gonna be on the 3rd of this month, and whoever we appoint, they're gonna have a special meeting on the 10th. So, it'll be this Thursday at 2:00 PM down in Crescent City. So, whoever either is appointed or is willing to serve, that is the first meeting of the year. We have a joint powers agreement, which was signed in January 2012, between the county and the county of Del Norte, along with other municipalities up and down the coast here. So, this is a longstanding organization, and we just need to take a recommendation or get a recommendation for appointment.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask you to be the Curry County Commission Representative on that regional Board, and I assume you can make it on the 10th, that first meeting. We'll check our travel policy, by the way.
I believe I can, yes.
So, we need a motion on that?
Yeah.
So, move, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
Any further questions or comments? Call for the question?
Aye.
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 Congratulations on that, too.
Information on the meeting.
Thank you so much. All right, can we, we're gonna move to number G, which is County Administrator Updates, Mr. Schroeder?
We're gonna do number four, Future Agenda Item Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one, you are right.
Yep, so, there's a couple items which I would like to bring the Board, to the Board attentions coming forward, now that there's a new Board. We're, I'd like to have a workshop, if the Board is amenable, on the Flores Lake Property Land Swap. We've been discussing this issue for quite some time, and we have proposals that we probably would need to meet an executive session first, because it will be discussing the negotiations of land, but I would like to have a workshop first to make sure that the Board, first off, is informed, and secondly, wants to go forward with this type of thing. So, if the Board is amenable to that, I'll schedule that sometime in the future.
So, are you speaking of the Flores Lake?
The land swap, 70 acres of Flores Lake land, or 30 acres on 101. We have, we did have a workshop back in like August or September, what the progress on that, there's been appraisals on that, from both our side, Mr. Mirino basically did both appraisals. There's a difference in the land value, the state, right now, it's back in the State's Court to come, to basically come back to us with the proposals to mitigate the differences in the land, and I'd like to make sure before we all keep going down this road, that the Board is supportive of this particular issue before we make anybody else do any more work.
So, what date did you have in mind for that?
We would put it together, you know, I talked to the State to make sure that where they're at. I don't know if it'd be, I would hope to have it this month, otherwise it'd be the first, you know, that first one in February, but...
For a workshop?
A workshop, yes.
Can I get a packet on that, so I can get up to speed?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Important, in my view, not a priority, and so, my preference would be not to accelerate direction on that from this Board and just, you know, maybe we can do a workshop in the middle of February, but right now, my feeling is not critical with the amount of work that we have before us. You warned, everybody might be needing to bring sleeping bags, and so, that, you know, I'll buy the coffee and donuts, but I just don't think that's a necessary priority at this time, and there's a lot of additional data that I think might be coming in, Mr. Chair, in the next four to five weeks, I hope it would help us bring you up to speed and certainly all of us. Thank you.
Anything further?
On that particular issue?
Yes.
Administrator Schroeder, do you see the importance of moving forward quickly, or...
I think February is fine to have an educational workshop on it, send out the packet, the information, I think, my main point in here is, the previous Board seemed to have a commitment to going forward with this land swap, I wanna make sure that before we make the State continue to go down work, that this Board is also supportive of having a land swap. If they're not, let's put a stop to the process. So, it's more of, it's more of a gather information, support from the Board if we wanna go forward with this and continue working on it.
Why don't we do this, why don't we, if I can get a packet, and why don't we reschedule this, put this back on the agenda for the meeting on the 16th? And we, that way, I can look at it as well, and I can give a fair assessment of my opinion, should we go forward with a workshop or not?
Okay. Second thing I'd like to have a workshop on with the Commission is towers. Those are where we've had some significant repairs due to storm damage this year, and all the money we're putting into these towers are, is basically wasted money, because these towers are obsolete, the parts are old, we're buying, you know, Day Wireless is piecing together with, you know, eBay and used parts, and we're getting tower parts from other counties that are decommissioning their issues, and we're collecting those parts. And it's a very complicated issue, and it's very expensive, millions, you know, a few million dollars, which we can stage out, and I think it'd be very good for Day, to schedule a workshop for Day Wireless to come in and bring the Commission up to speed, saying, here's where we're at, because at some point, we're gonna need to commit to repairing these things, or we're gonna have, you know, the issues we had just in December, we had South County did not have coverage, and there was no, no radio coverage, we were using cellphones and/or, as far as the reach for the Brookings Tower would go, which is not very far. This is, this is a critical issue to keep not only our deputies safe, but also other emergency management, so, if the Board is amenable to that, I will work on a common schedule when Day Wireless can come.
I'd like to ask, go ahead, John.
Sheriff Ward, I have to echo that sentiment, so, just to clarify, we're not talking about the towers. The towers are fine, it's the microwaves that are attached to the towers and the radio communications that are, that are faulty, and he's right, we have had some bad communication in South County where it puts our deputies in situations where officer safety issues. We cannot communicate with them if they're going out on a domestic in the South County somewhere outside of the reach of Brookings, and so, I've tried to make it where I'm sending two deputies, when I don't have two deputies at a certain time on calls like that, because you just can't reach them, and for their safety and the community's safety, we, it's very critical that those microwaves get replaced and work, back in working order. They did take parts from the Black Mound to the Bosley, and, but that, just more of a communication, north from Puss River in that area. Down south, it's a combination of UHF and VHF communications, but without that Black Mound Tower, we're not getting the communications we have, and Day Wireless did find some parts, and there's, I think they're gonna be sent out on the 21st of this month, but, you know, up until then, we're still flying blind down there, in a lot of the areas. The deputies are having to go in through Brookings dispatch, to be dispatched in the general area, but outside of Brookings area, we're, it's a big issue. So, I don't want my guys down there when I can't communicate with them, that's the problem. We're still gonna provide the service, we're still gonna go, but it's, it's a tense situation.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Roadmaster Christiansen and I went up there about six weeks ago, and we got up there just before dark, 'cause I'd heard there was gonna be $7,000 to basically fix the tarp, and thinking, wow, that's really expensive, so anyway, we took a look, and when you see how high it is, and the access, how poor the access is, you go, man, I wouldn't wanna climb up that, so, it made sense, we got pictures, came down, and kinda made a commitment to go to the other four towers.
And the one that was damaged, it's not the one that fell, I mean, another one fell off.
Which is double the, yeah, that's...
And we just happened to find out that we had purchased a dish, a microwave dish, 10, 15 years ago that's been out there and all crated up, it didn't have all the parts we needed, so, they were able to put that up, rob parts from the Black Mound to get that done, now we just have to fix Black Mound.
So, what's the longevity of what we've got? I mean, we're just kinda piecing it together, what's your best estimate of the longevity of...
That's a tough, that's a very tough question. It could be, the snowstorm could take it out this year, or it could last another 10, 15 years, who knows? But, we do have services with Day Wireless to make sure we, you know, we're not without service, put it that way, maintenance service.
If we can schedule a workshop, could you try and find time to attend the workshop and kinda, you know?
Absolutely.
If your schedule permits, of course.
Absolutely, you know, and I have assigned, you know, Sergeant Joel Hensley to help, you know, manage the whole tower project.
It'd be nice to have a Sheriff's, you know, a voice from the Sheriff's Office there as well for information.
Absolutely, and I'll have Joel part of that, because he's been working with Day Wireless on a lot of the tower issues and microwave issues. Those microwaves issues, we've been talking about getting those replaced for a long time, and it's time, they gotta get replaced, if we're having problems with them now, it's just gotta get fixed.
Thank you, Sheriff.
So, that's one we, excuse me.
One more?
I just have one other question, I know they need replacing, but are we going to be putting into this the replacement costs and having people who are using the towers take care of the replacement costs in the future, so we don't end up with this same mess again? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand. The past Roadmaster Doug Robbins is working on that very issue, about having their, all the users pay their fair share on the maintenance cost on that. Right now, it's been borne just basically by the county, and coming out of the road funds and things like that, but...
Yeah, well, we've got to do that.
Yeah, it has to be done.
Plan for the future, okay, thank you.
Absolutely, that's a good plan.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. Well, I'd, go ahead.
Just, I think that is a high priority workshop, as soon as we can schedule, that would be my view.
Yes, I agree.
All right. Those are one of two issues that I had on my agenda right off the bat, so...
Okay.
I have one other issue regarding fire bans. November 11th, there was a fire in Cape Ferello area, this was after the fire ban had been lifted, and one of the reasons that happened is because, according to the fire chief in that area, the ban had been lifted too soon. So, what they would like to do is have the ability to put the ban back in effect, this is in the unincorporated areas, the fire departments, the various fire departments, if that particular region is dry or whatever, but I've already arranged with Mike Robinson on February 13th to come to that, and we also need to get all of the various fire departments invited to that.
I'd be in favor of always replacing a ban if it's, if it gets dry and we're in danger.
Well, and I think every area is a little bit different, I know the Cape Ferello area has a lot of downed tan oak trees that are very volatile, so...
All right. Moving to H, Commissioners Updates, seems I don't have any history, I don't really have any updates. I would say to everyone here, I am humbled by the, by the showing this morning, all the people at my swearing-in, it was quite humbling to me, and I appreciate the county's trust and support. I will promise this county that I will do everything that I can to move this county forward. I have a lot of things going on in my head right now, getting people organized, getting situations straightened out that I feel are amiss, and I will, I will be very diligent to do that. I would ask everyone to please be a little patient, first with the small things of me getting up to speed on some of the little things that it takes to sit here, and then we're also going to need some time to get, to get our direction and our feet under us. It's not gonna be one big fix, it's gonna be a lot of small fixes, but I will promise you this, I will sit and do the job full-time, I will sit here as long as it takes to get the job done, and thank you very much. Commissioner Boyce?
Are we on Commissioner Comments now?
Yes.
Just one thing, first, on the Mike Robinson Goose Forest Protective Association, the 15th workshop.
13th.
Oh, I'm sorry, you said 13th, thank you.
February 13th.
Thank you. I think that might be a little soon, but I'll certainly encourage anyone and everyone to participate. Yes, the fire season is marching forward, gives a lot of people tremendous concern, we don't wanna have a repeat of 2017 and 2018. I have tremendous respect for Mike Robinson, and he takes the designations of the bans very, very seriously, he's been in this business for 25 years, and so, yeah, I would encourage the public to participate and hear what he has to say. I attended the Goose Forest Protective Association quarterly meeting last month, and there's just a lot of things going on with the Oregon Department of Forestry, the Good Neighbor Authority, all the forest protective in prep for, in prep for the 2019 season, and I sent out a letter, I think you may have had a chance to read it, I don't know if you had the time, but just challenging the state of Oregon that we need to fund them fully. So, maybe this will all work together in workshop, and that information can come out. So, we're on Commissioner...
Comments.
Thank you. So, I have a few things. First of all, congratulations, you know, that's the second time in six weeks I left that courtroom with a big smile on our face, my face, it might be, there might be some more coming, and so, it's a great day for Curry County. As I get to know you better, just on a personal level, I think that there's nothing that you and Bonnie wouldn't do for families, and kids in particular that are needing support and mentoring, and I've witnessed that myself, and it's a, it's a good leadership role you're taking, and I'm just proud to be able to serve with you, and as we get to know one another better, I think that we'll be able to pull a lot of people, unite this county and seriously work towards solving problems. I have the distinction of breaking one of David Brock Smith's records, and that, I'd like to say, that's thousands of dollars of resources that he's brought back to this county through his dedication and work, but no, it is actually, I broke his record for being gavelled by a former Commissioner, and so, I see this gavel here, and I'm hoping that now that you're Chair, you will take this gavel here, and be careful, I'm very sensitive, okay? Pass that over to him. So, also, you know, I've been very outspoken in the direction of this county and my opposition to several, I won't go into detail today, but several items that I see as waste, I see as money that has been poorly spent, and I have plenty of documentation, I had asked the Budget Committee to start a simple audit, maybe we should start at some point with the Commissioner's Office, I'm not saying that there's anything wrong there, but I think in the full interest of transparency to the public, that it's a new day and a new determination, not just talk about saving funds, but to actually work towards that, and again, the amount of money that's gone out is just absolutely staggering, it's been all with my strong prior and present, or during that time, opposition. As we move forward, I'm gonna be working, and I think you agree with this, on a five-year plan for this county, we know that we need additional revenue sources, we know that we need to cut spending, we know that we're in a tough position, state legislature right now, as a lot of people know, they, you saw the pilot ad, excuse me, the pilot article, I'm sorry, that they are looking for billions of dollars of additional revenue, something that Commissioner Huxley and I agree on very strongly, that the purse responsibility, that the burden that comes back to the counties is staggering, and if nobody in the leadership of the state government has really taken on that responsibility to, to solve that problem, and so, as it affects us, there's ways that I hope that we can change that and amend for at least future employees coming into our employment, that we can develop a 401K plan and start saving dollars that way. But in that five-year plan, all this will be lined out, and I'll need your help, and I think it's the right way to go, and I think we can justify any expense, although it should be some essentially minimum, to the, to the citizens that this is the best way to approach our problems. Commissioner's Job Description, I'm gonna read what, two people in this community that have worked very hard to volunteer their time, their expertise, their dedication to this job description, what the, what the people that have elected us, what their expectations are for us, and it's, one word that comes to mind is a... uh, it's, uh, one word that comes to mind is accountability. And, uh, I'm gonna, it's gonna take a few minutes, uh, and I wanna, I wanna commend you for helping me and also, uh, Council Huddle, uh, I think, uh, for the assistance you offered, and, and I think a reasonable push to have this meeting today so that we wouldn't even waste two more days. We lost last week, and the problems are, they're coming at us, and so we just gained at least a couple days, and so, um, here's, here's what, uh, here's what we've been working on for several days, sir, and I'd like to ask if either Commissioners in general principle concept can support this. Creek County Position Description, position titled County Commissioner. Uh, salary level, level as determined by the Compensation Committee. Uh, Position Summary. The position of County Commissioner is an elected full-time position and responsibility. The three Commissioners are expected to work hours in excess of the normal business hours established for county employees. County Commissioners by majority vote establish policies, procedures, and direct long-term planning. Specifically, they oversee the following. Propose revenue sources, adjust and adopt the budget, set the tax rates, authorize levies, adopt and participate in fiscal policies. Expenses. Adopt ordinances, establish and appoint advisory boards and committees. Participate in the overall business management of the county. They also serve the ceremonial function of the county in representations to the public for the public good and betterment of Creek County and its citizens. The Commissioners are the full and final authority of all county affairs, not under authority of other elected county officials. The Commissioners serve as the legislative arm of the county as well as the executive and quasi-judicial branches of Creek County Government. Commissioners are responsible for planning, formation, implementation of the annual, annual budget, then adoption. In addition, Commissioners represent county concerns before local, state, and national boards and commissions. They serve on federal, state, and local mandated governmental panels, boards, and commissions with fiscal duties and authority over public monies. You know, I've been doing a lot of traveling, and I'm very anxious, you know, not that I'm a George Washington, but Washington sent Ben Franklin to France, and he quickly found out how hard it was to learn to speak French. Well, in Salem, they tend to speak French a little bit, but we, I've made a lot of friends up there, and I have great conference, you'll make a, a great number of friends, and that is, I, I think you believe, a very important part of our responsibility, uh, to work for our county and our citizens outside the county. And, uh, I'm glad, and I'm hoping that you're okay with doing a majority of that travel. I'll still be doing some, but, uh, and, and working the, the issues that I think are critical and, and what I've learned on. Commissioners must always be aware that at various times they play different roles as advocates who strive to advance the legitimate needs of their citizens, as legislators who balance the public interest and private rights in considering and enacting ordinances, policies, orders, and resolutions, and as decision-makers who arrive at fair and impartial determinations. The Board of County Commissioners must be aware that their obligation to confer behavior to standards of ethical conduct that warrant the trust of their constituents. Each official must find with his, within his or her own conscience, the touchstone by which to determine what conduct is appropriate. There's essential powers and authorities here that, uh, I would be glad to give the two of you, um, that I think you, again, you can, uh, support in principle. That's not to say that there isn't, uh, some refinement or some, um, inputs certainly from the two of you that you may wish to do. Daily expectations. Day-to-day operations include, but are not limited to attendance, participation, and travel to and from meetings and appointments to further the interests of Creek County with the intent to carry out Commissioner duties to the county citizenry. The public expects a strong work ethic and civility to all, including fellow Commissioners and county employees. Commissioners are expected to attend all county board commissioner meetings, responsibly exercise the trust conferred by the people upon their elected officials. There's more, that's enough for today. I hope we can work on this over time. Commissioner Pass, do you support it in general?
I do.
Thank you. Commissioner Gold?
Uh, I'd have to look at it more carefully, but most of it sounded fine.
Thank you, Commissioner Gold. I think that's all I have, Mr. Chair, for today.
All right. Commission, Commissioner Gold?
Okay, as past chair for last year, um, part of my duties was to come up with a State of the County report for 2018. So I'm just gonna read that, and I'm gonna pass a copy to everybody, so you can have that. Much has been accomplished in the county this past year. I have highlighted some of the events that I feel are important and am reporting these events in four categories. First, quality of life for Creek County citizens. Second, economic development. Third, improving county efficiency, communication, and transparency. And fourth, public safety. I realize that there is some overlap in some of these categories, and these events are not necessarily in chronological order. First, quality of life for Creek County citizens. The Board of Commissioners, BOC, was informed about some nuisance and health issues by a group of property owners on Hamilton Lane in Harbor. Previously, these issues were not addressed by BOC because of lack of funding. The BOC budgeted for a code enforcement officer, and those issues on Hamilton Lane have been addressed. There have been quite a number of other properties in Creek County with similar issues that have been reported to the code enforcement officer, and these issues are being prioritized and addressed. Two, Brookings Head Start Grant for remodeling the Head Start Building, the old library in Brookings, was approved by the BOC. The grant for this project was over $1 million and is scheduled to be completed in September 2019. This should be a boon to our local economy by adding construction jobs as well as giving our young children a better and safer place to learn. Three, the BOC sent a letter to Sutter Coast Hospital's directors expressing concerns about the high cost to citizens who use their emergency room. Just as an aside, 26% of Sutter's inpatient revenue comes from Creek County. Their emergency room services were contacted to M Care, contracted to M Care, which were charging approximately 10 times the maximum allowable charge for local carriers. The Delnort Supervisors and the Delnort Health District also sent letters about these high charges. As a result, Sutter Coast has discontinued the contract with M Care effective January 19, 2019, and patients going to the emergency room at Sutter Coast will now be paying far less for their care. Four, it has been verified by state officials that is, that it is legal and possible to have a critical access satellite hospital in Brookings. A standalone emergency room has been advocated for Brookings, but it is important to note that CMS, that's Medicare, frowns on standalone emergency rooms because they increase costs and risks for patients. Much work has to be done on this issue before it can be, before it can come to fruition. Five, public county, Creek County Public Transit Service District is eligible to get significant new grant funding through STIF, that's statewide transportation improvement funds. The grant application has been submitted, and the transit district will use the new funding source to give the public more access to public transfer, transportation in Creek County by extending the hours and number of routes that are available. Under economic development? Uh, first, BOC passed an ordinance that approved having enterprise zones in Creek County. Industries built in these zones could get lower property taxes for a limited time and would have to pay employees more than minimum wage. It is important to note that these industries would be subject to current county zoning regulations and would have to go through the proper process to obtain building permits. The goal is to bring investment and jobs to the county for sustained long-term growth. Two, the airport was sold to the city of Brookings. This is the culmination of years of discussion between the city and the county. Bottom line, the city has plans to develop the airport that are easier to accomplish with city ownership. The future development of the airport will benefit all Creek County citizens. Three, a Citizens Revenue Task Force, that's CRFT, was formed, and they have had a number of meetings to find possible increased revenue for the county. First thing that came out of the CRFT was a possible ballot measure for a transient lodging tax, that's a TLT. This would implement a tax for temporary lodging under 30 days to facilities in unincorporated areas. These taxes are currently being charged in our cities. The BOC approved the first reading of this ballot measure. After the second reading, it should be on the May 2019 ballot. Other possible ideas for increasing county revenue will be discussed by the CRFT and will be brought to the BOC for consideration. Appropriate measures will be referred to the citizens who ultimately decide the future of the county. Four, the BOC passed an ordinance that will allow Pacific Gales Golf Course in Port Orford to use wastewater from the Port Orford Waste Treatment Facility to water the course. This will be a win-win for the city and the county and the golf course. Next, improving county efficiency, communication, and transparency. One, the new county website was launched on February 8th, 2018. The website makes it much easier for the public to access all of the meetings, the GIS system, and other items of interest. Two, the county continues to televise all meetings and has approved Curry Voices using citizens' volun, citizen volunteers that have been trained to use equipment to produce programs that are of interest to Creek County citizens. Three, Clark Schroeder, the county administrator, was hired in April 2018 after extensive, extensive recruiting efforts of the Proffman Firm. This is the first time Creek County has hired an administrator. Over 50% of all general law counties in Oregon currently have administrators. Four, the ordinance, an ordinance was passed to make sure that all public records requests are handled in an efficient, consistent, and legal manner. Five, extensive effort was put forth by Commissioner Huxley, Julie Swift, HR Director, and John Huddle, Legal Counsel, in conjunction with department heads and administrator to update and revise the employee handbook. Six, there were several large purchases that were approved by the BOC for equipment for the road department that will enable them to make quicker road repairs and have less downtime because of old equipment failures. In the long run, these pieces of equipment will enable the road department to be more cost-effective and efficient. And last, public safety. One, the BOC increased the budget to fund four new road deputies for Sheriff's Department. Two, the ambulance services of Port Orford and Calore were consolidated, all under Calore. Three, the elevator in the jail was replaced. It's important to note that both the jail and the courthouse are extremely old and will need to be replaced, and that's understating the issue. The communication towers, these are needed for 9/11, uh, or 9/11, rather, need to be replaced and will take millions of dollars to do so. These towers are so old that parts are no longer available for repairs. In the past, there were no provisions made to bill the entities that use these towers for future replacement. This issue is currently being addressed. Four, the BOC approved funding for a study done by Portland State University that will be looking at the feasibility of consolidating all of the 9/1, 9/11 services in the county. This study is being paid for by both Brookings and the county equally. Five, unfortunately, there were two fires in Creek County. The Lobster Creek Fire, which was extinguished within weeks, and the Klondike Fire, which was close to Agnes, that was very large and was not extinguished until early December. A number of families had to be evacuated for a short period, and fortunately, no citizens were injured and no homes were destroyed. Thank you.
Any further comments? Ms. Gold, any, and your Commissioner comments, anything further?
Uh, no, that's it. I think that was plenty.
Commissioner?
I just have a couple other items. I may have a State of the County. I think, I think it'd be wise just to, uh, do that, offer that on the night. I could do it today if there's time. I see we're under 45 minutes, which is, uh, maybe notable. But, uh, if I may, and subject the Board's approval here, uh, ask for a consensus to direct staff to bring back and, uh, possibly emergency ordinance to repeal the travel policy, um, travel ordinance and policy, and then along with that, staff could, uh, I think we need a resolution to increase that budget so that you'll be able to go to county college, and, um, we may need, I doubt if we'd use this much, but we may need to increase that for the last six months by 15,000. Um, but I, I, if we could just, Mr. Chair, uh, bring that to the Board right now, just to have a, a general discussion and see where we are on that.
Commissioner Gold?
Um, the only thing I've had, a problem I've had with travel is that there has been a lack of accountability, no receipts put in, that sort of thing. I am all for travel as long as there's receipts that are, are, and documentation of that travel is presented. I think that's important for us to be as accountable for our actions as the employees are required to be. That's...
And I would concur with that, uh, that we do need to set up things, um, you know, travel in this county is, is essential, and we need to travel not only in the county, but we need to travel outside the county, especially if you're gonna look for revenue sources. I find it difficult to ask somebody to come here and ask them for their money. We're going to be looking at private sector money as well to invest in the county. So I do believe that we need a broader travel policy, um, but I, I, I do agree that we need to have some set rules like, I remember when I worked for, for GSA Services when I was a kid, we had a clipboard that had a piece of paper on it, who checked the car out, what miles were on the car when they left, what miles were on the car when they came back, and if they bought gas, they had a receipt. Uh, I'm not in, in big favor of having credit cards. I just assume each Commissioner submit an invoice or, or their credit card receipts to the county to, to pay it back, but those are my opinions. But I do agree, we need to move pretty quickly to expand our travel policy because, um, it's gonna be necessary to help pull the county up. Uh, we will also need, um, Louise to, uh, get with us possibly in a workshop, um, in the next week. It's gonna have to be done pretty quickly, though. Again, let's bring our sleeping bags.
On your left?
Yes.
Um, two, uh, two points. Uh, Council Huddle, what would be the procedure to repeal an ordinance?
Usually, in my experience, you use the same procedure to repeal an ordinance that you use to adopt an ordinance, so, uh, under Oregon statute, that requires two readings, unless it's an emergency, which is one reading by unanimous vote, uh, or, um, two readings. Also, ordinances are effective 90 days after, uh, adoption unless emergency. So even if an emergency reading takes two votes, it can still be, uh, effective immediately, so...
And does there need to be any notice to repeal that travel ordinance?
The published notice that we put out on our...
Would be enough, they were only 10 days, okay. The second thing, um, uh, from a budgetary standpoint, due to the, uh, the fund level for the Commissioner's travel budget, any additional money would have to have a supplemental budget. Supplemental budgets need to be advertised, so there need to be a 10-day notice in the paper in order to, uh, bring that back to the Board for, uh, basically a vote. Ms. Coulter, would you like to, uh, expand on that particular sentence?
Okay, since the, a supplemental budget that will affect, uh, the appropriation level by more than, um, 10%, which I believe that this would, I think the current budget is like 8,000, so if you're gonna add 15, certainly would have to be advertised. That advertisement is, um, not, less than five days, not more than 10. So I do need, um, our papers are weekly, I, so I would have to advertise by a Wednesday, so, uh, a supplemental budget for travel could not go in before the January 22nd meeting, 'cause I have to advertise it next Wednesday, um, for that meeting.
Could we advertise on Saturday?
It's not five days.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
So we would have a meeting on the 20, you're recommending a meeting on the 23rd of January, a Wednesday?
Yeah, that, the, I think, isn't that the next, are we not having a meeting?
Well, we, yeah, we can schedule meetings. We don't have an awful, actually, I only have one item on the agenda for the 16th. I don't have anything else to discuss, but...
I do have...
You basically would put something in the paper so it'd be advertised on the 16th, right?
To be advertised on the 16th.
Advertised on the 16th, so therefore the Board could consider on the 23rd.
Yes. And I have several other, um, uh, supplemental budgets, uh, that I need to put in, and they have to be advertised too, so I could do it all at once. So I do have more than one item then for the 23rd, on supplemental budgets.
Okay, so we should, so, so the question, one of the things for the Board to consider is, um, even considering on the 16th, we have a two-hour minimum for our, uh, our viewing. So if we meet and we just have one item, we still get charged for two hours worth of meeting time. So we wanna make sure we're packaging enough items to make sure it's worthwhile and it's effective, cost-effective to do this. So we could tentatively schedule, uh, a meeting on the 23rd then. Actually, we'd have to, we wouldn't have to tentatively schedule, we have to schedule it today, so she can... have to, we wouldn't have to tentatively schedule, we have to schedule it today so she could get the advertisement in.
Um, you know, if you do, I thought that the sixteenth was a workshop?
Yeah.
Date?
It's a meeting.
It is going to be a meeting? Then if I can get supplemental budgets in, uh, by, um, after lunch, um, I could have it for the sixteenth, 'cause it'll go in on the ninth. Um, however, I need to know how much you want me to put in for a, uh, travel budget, how much you wanna add to the travel budget so that I could put a supplemental budget in for that, and I need to know that today.
I mentioned fifteen. Go ahead.
Council? So I had some questions, and we talk about the commissioner travel budget, and is the commissioner travel budget just one item, or is it, I thought it was, uh, vehicle allowance, meals, and...
Conference fees.
Right.
Conference fees, travel, meals and lodging, um, car.
Okay. So, and...
So is it like fi- four or five different line items?
Okay.
But those line items currently total forty-five-hundred dollars.
Right, and so Commissioner Boyce just asked for it to be raised by an amount of fifteen thousand dollars. So is that sufficient enough for you to put within those?
Yes, I, I, I could just take that in a, maybe even, um, you know, just percentage-wise, spread that fifteen thousand over those, or whatever makes sense, and then, then I bring it to you, and you, you decide if that's...
Very good. Thank you. Okay, is that clear enough then?
Yes. I'd just like to have board direction to make sure that...
I just have a question. Is that going to be fifteen thousand total for the year, or are you adding fifteen thousand for the rest of the year? Is that what you're proposing?
My understanding is that it's adding fifteen thousand dollars to the forty-five-ish that's already in there, bringing it close to total of twenty.
Okay, so we're talking twenty thousand approximately.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just keep things in perspective, the forty-seven-hundred dollar...
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
Last year was forty-seven.
Excuse me. Thank you. That is correct. And that's also, just again, for perspective, that's also your budget, forty-five-hundred, right? So we're, we're right at the same level for commissioners?
You know, I, I know the commissioner's budget well, but to know my budget, I'd have to go in and add it.
I'm sure that's what you told me, but I could be, be wrong.
And, yeah, and that would be going off the top of my head. I'd prefer not to do numbers like that.
Okay, but they're, they're very comparable, and that's, that's the point to, to show you how restrictive it has been, and way that, that's a way, hopefully, that we justify the public why I would say fifteen or even twenty thousand total. Um, just a side note, my credit card, since I took office, runs about a hundred and two dollars average a month. Okay? Uh, also, on the ninth, uh, in, in interest to, uh, or respect for, uh, Commissioner Gold's request, uh, any notion that, that I haven't been held accountable, I have, if I have staff, I can, I can offer absolutely. And in fact, I have available an, uh, Excel spreadsheet that shows every dime that's been spent for, that I have spent for and toward county travel since I took office January first, two thousand seventeen, and including about three thousand of my own money to somehow make it work because of the forty-five, forty-seven-hundred restrictive budget that has made it very, very difficult. So I can have that available on the ninth, but do we have, Mr. Chair, consensus that we want to direct staff to go in this direction? I think I'm hearing we do.
I would agree.
I think it's a little high myself, but, you know, I'm...
We're gonna have you travel too. We need you.
I actually have been, and I have not charged the county a dime, just to let you know.
Well, appreciate that.
Um, I don't think it's been appreciated much at all, but that's okay.
Well, have you brought reports back, Madam Chair? 'Cause this is...
Yes, I have.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
All right.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and the other thing, just to, just to highlight that, that fifteen thousand, we actually, and again, I don't have the figures in front of me, but we're actually in the hole. We've actually overspent the forty-five-hundred dollars already, um, so we'll be, not by much, maybe a thousand bucks. I don't know, I mean, rough, I...
Roughly.
There's, whatever it is, we're slightly over that forty-five-hundred already, so...
I understand. I understand.
And just for, for further direction, um, you want me to, uh, transfer fifteen thousand dollars from the general fund to the, um, Commissioner's Fund, Fund One Eleven, fifteen thousand dollars. And from the general fund, that money would come from, uh, there's a sixty-thousand-dollar material and services budget item that we use for, um, things that come up during the year. Is that where you would like me to, um, reduce that expenditure line item and move that as a revenue over to, a transfer to, um, the Commissioner Fund?
Commissioner Gold?
I just have a question on the materials and services fund. What has that, what have we used in the past? What's the history on that?
Last, last year, we, it, actually, last year, um, the year before the Budget Committee reduced that from a hundred thousand dollars down to sixty thousand dollars. It's kind of a contingency fund for things that come up during the year. Last year, we completely used almost every dollar of it for things that came up during the year. And this year so far, I don't believe we've used much, if any, of it yet.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Louise, you mentioned you had multiple supplemental budgets to present?
Yes, I have, um, to confess, I haven't...
I was gonna ask if you would just share what those might be. I just, I'm serious. I hope that's okay to ask that question, what the other ones are gonna be.
So, so last year in January, there was a, uh, change in the way that, um, we, the state provided monies to public health. And so they decided to do that in January. We had to do a supplemental budget because at that time, the money started coming into, uh, the county directly and then, um, passed through to CCH. The money that we were supposed to come in from January to June of two thousand, uh, eighteen, gotta figure out, seventeen, eighteen years, um, was about two hundred thousand. So when we did that supplemental budget, it was after I had set up all of the budget sheets, and I did not catch that. And so what I need to put in a supplemental budget in public health is that whole thing for a whole year, so I need a supplemental budget of bringing in the four hundred thousand dollars from the state and then passing it through to CCH.
So it's basically a wash is all it is?
It's a wash, but it's, uh, it has to have a supplemental budget because although I could bring in that four hundred thousand, I'm not really supposed to send out four hundred thousand dollars if I have no budget to do that.
Plus it provides you transparency.
Yes.
Okay. And what else?
Um, you know, there's a couple more, and, and I'm, I'm just really not sure, I just, I kinda have a little small pile, and I'm not even sure if those need to be advertised. I just do have a couple more budgets. One of the things I still have not done yet, because negotiation still hasn't finished yet, is none of the negotiated, um, for SEIU or the sheriff, which have already been settled, were in the budget, so I'm probably going to have to do supplemental budgets to, um, transfer funds to the funds that need, um, departments that need to, um, for those settlements. The only reason I haven't done it is because I probably will have to advertise some of those, and if I do, then, um, I would like to include, it costs a lot of money to do those supplemental budget advertising, and I'd like to include, um, whatever we decide on the road department, which is still in negotiations. And, um, there might be some, um, non-represented payroll adjustments, maybe, I don't know.
I'm sure we'll keep you busy the next couple of months.
So I'd like to have it all, all in one, one big, um, package when I do that, um, so that I don't have, um, all those trickling through and, and being advertised in, um, several times when it's a couple hundred dollars at, every time I do those advertising.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Council Huddle, can we make that hopefully a little bit easy for her, or schedule that, or is there something we can do additionally?
Uh, I think Louise outlined the process. She, if she gets the, uh, supplemental budgets, uh, prepared by this afternoon, and she has at least clear enough direction on the travel, um, it can be put on for action on the sixteenth, so...
You mentioned several budgets you wanted to advertise for.
Well, there's that, that one that for public health, I need to, um...
That was the other one?
To, to advertise for, for sure. I have to look at the couple more that's on my desk and make sure that they don't have to be advertised, but if they do, I'll include that in this advertisement.
And those are for the, to reflect the negotiated raises in the union agreements that weren't...
No, I'm not doing that one yet, but I just, I just know I, as I was looking through things, um, uh, I think, um, when we got the November, um, statements, I, I noticed a couple of things that needed to be repaired, and, and, um, so I just don't remember if they needed advertising.
Okay.
Um, if we're talking about the budget, about the ordinance or the travel ordinance, uh, before you had a travel ordinance, you had a travel policy, which was adopted in November of two thousand seventeen. And so the discussion point for the board is if you go ahead and have an emergent, a new ordinance, emergency removing the travel ordinance, are you gonna revert back to the travel policy? And would you like to have a discussion concerning what should the travel policy reflect for Commissioner Travel?
Commissioner Gold?
Well, I definitely think there should be some guidelines for Commissioner Travel. I, I'm gonna go back to the, the old saying that there needs to be accountability, and if there's not, I don't think we're doing the public the service that we should be doing.
Commissioner Boyce?
Well, there's a certain magistrate, if I, with all due respect, that decided that there was plenty of accountability and effort, and, uh, that's how he ruled. And in, in addition to that, it was mentioned about busting the budget, uh, that same judge also recognized that it was on, essentially on paper, uh, from one county department to another, charging forty-three cents a mile on a thirteen-year-old car that put us way over, even though I was putting, uh, my own fuel in, uh, quite often, more than not. Um, so without, I'll have the accountability for you on Wednesday, and in, in interest to where this board is going in the future with the policy, uh, I think we do need to repeal that travel ordinance, and immediately start working on a new policy, and I agree with Commissioner Gold on that.
I agree with, with, with Commission on that as well. I think we need to, you know, look toward repealing the ordinance. I would, I would say that we need to...
Change...
Pardon?
Change the policy.
Change the policy.
Okay.
And, and, like I said, there are some, some very clean, easy, clear ways for accountability in a travel policy, um, with our vehicles and, and hotels and, you know, our food and all that, so I think we can quickly and easily get that worked out.
Uh, Mr. Huddle, um, how long would it take you to prepare a new ordinance to repeal a travel ordinance? 'Cause obviously, we're, we can't do it Wednesday because obviously we don't have notice, but would you like to put that on the schedule for next week?
Well, it, it sounds like we are going to have a meeting on the sixteenth. Um, and again, the, the notice requirement is a reasonable notice, um, and so we could do the ordinance, uh, on the sixteenth, and certainly I could prepare, an ordinance to repeal another ordinance would be a one-liner, it would be pretty simple. And then the real work would be putting together a draft travel policy, but we have so much material to work from, I think I could send around some drafts of that in very short order. So I think by the sixteenth, we could have both those items prepared for the board.
That'd be my recommendation, is or, in order to have, uh, get feedback from the commissioners, that you basically collate, and then we could basically present something instead of having just a hour-long, line-by-line discussion of each policy. So I think that'd be the most efficient method to get that repealed.
I think feedback is great from all the commissioners. Get their feedbacks and thoughts, and then you can compile from there. Right. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you again. There's several citizens that agree with us in what you just said, that it's a fairly simple thing to do, and, uh, apparently that's, travel ordinance eighteen oh four, and that's what we would be revoking?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And we, we, I've already done some work on that, so...
So Ms. Colstrom, you have the direction you need? Okay, and County Council, you have the direction you need?
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else for any further comments? All right, at this time, we are going to enter into an executive session, um, and then once we come out of executive session, we will come back into a live session here and, uh, let you know, yes, I'm...
Oh, thank you. So, uh, Mr. Chair, when you do executive session, we list the statutory reasons. This is per ORS one ninety-two point six-six-oh-two-F, to consider information exempt, uh, by law from inspection in this attorney-client conversation, and then ORS one ninety-two six-six-oh-two-H, to consider legal rights and duties regarding likely litigation. Um, this is about, um, options with respect to the county administrator, and if you look on next week's agenda, there's further discussion of that. No decisions will be made, um, at this date, uh, on, on, on that issue, um, so we're just going to discuss what the paths are, so, uh, and no decision will be made. So that's what's, um, on the exec session for this afternoon.
For Mr. Boyce, this meeting is...
Well, we're in, we're in exec session.
Shows some courage.
We're gonna ask a five-minute recess?
Recession.
Okay. So we'll see you in a few.
We need a reliable federal partner to invest with us in our nation's economic growth and competitiveness. We need a long-term legislative solution with increased funding to ensure continued success in operating our nation's transportation system. Counties face further revenue losses each year because billions of dollars in e-commerce sales tax revenue isn't collected. The Marketplace Fairness Act would enable states and localities to collect existing already owed taxes. It would also level the playing field between many internet retailers who don't collect sales taxes and Main Street businesses that do. County governments provide support services to federal public lands, touching seven hundred million annual visitors. We lead search and rescue operations, fight fires, protect the public's health, and maintain roads. Federal lands cover nearly one-third of the U.S. and impact sixty-nine percent of counties. Because federal land is exempt from local property taxes, counties depend on PILT, the Payment in Lieu of Taxes program, to provide essential services. The Secure Rural Schools program provides assistance to rural counties and school districts affected by the decline in revenue from timber harvests on federal land. Decisions to cut or delay funding both programs undermine our ability to provide services and maintain public lands. Our intergovernmental partnerships don't end with legislation because counties also implement and comply with federal and state regulations. When considering environmental protections, we know our communities and care deeply about the environment. We need a stronger voice in shaping common sense regulations that protect communities while also promoting economic growth. This is why NACO secured significant improvements to FEMA's flood insurance program and is pushing back on the waters of the U.S. proposed rule. Our message: Federal policies matter to county government, and county government matters to America. Every level of government must work together to shape policies that improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whether it's building and maintaining infrastructure, providing essential services, or fostering economic growth, counties are on the front line serving their citizens. NACO stands ready to work with the administration and Congress to make our nation's communities healthier, safer, and more vibrant places to live and work.
Did you see Allison at lunch today? I'm gonna text her. I'm gonna text Allison. Hey, hold up, Matt's calling me, Matt's calling me. Hey, we got, hey, we got the food, and we're on our way right now. Come on, come on. Hey, who's coming, bro? You're the one who hates that.
Counties serve nearly every American every day. Urban, suburban, and rural, counties work with states, the federal government, and other public and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. Whether you're commuting to work or shipping goods around the globe, counties matter. Counties own and maintain forty-five percent of the nation's roads and four out of ten bridges. And we're involved in nearly a third of public airports and transit systems. Counties matter when Americans need us the most. Counties matter when Americans need us the most. Counties matter because we support smart, fair, and effective criminal justice systems. We help fund police and sheriff's departments. We own and operate local jails, 911 call centers, and mental health facilities. Counties create healthy communities. We invest more than $80 billion in hospitals and medical services each year. Counties matter because we invest in the lives of residents of all ages, improving their quality of life where they live and work. Counties are the building blocks of state, regional, and national economies. We support housing, recreation, and economic development. And we do so much more. From issuing birth certificates to administering elections. Counties employ more than 3.5 million people. In total, we invest more than half a trillion dollars in our residents and our communities every year. Counties provide essential services we all depend on every day. That's why counties matter. Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are, you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So, do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country, with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities. And the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways. Keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Yeah, I just picked her up. We should be there in 20 minutes.
Who is it? Oh, it's him. Where is he?
I know. Yeah, I know. Yeah.
When a large forest fire breaks out, potentially threatening lives, homes, wildlife, and thousands of acres of forest land, the news coverage is immediate and consistent. Interviews with homeowners, firefighters, medical aid providers, and others continues nonstop until the fire is sufficiently contained. At that point, the cameras are turned off, the interviews are over, and it's on to the next event. The images of catastrophic wildfire with its ferocity and devastating impact on the land hold the interest and attention of the public. However, there is an equally important story occurring on that same landscape after the fire is contained, mopped up, and finally declared out that the public seldom sees. The frequency and size of these mega fires on federal forest land has increased significantly over the last few decades. All too often, what is left in their wake is a vast sea of dead, charred trees. Unfortunately, because of a maze of confusing and often contradictory rules and regulations, very little rehabilitation or reforestation occurs after these fires. The result of this neglect, in many cases, is as devastating as the fire itself. Here's why. Even in the hottest, severe fires, most of the dead trees remain standing, the wood not damaged by the fire, still suitable and valuable for lumber. But as the insects move in, within months, the dead and dying trees begin to deteriorate and decompose. Eventually, all of the economic value is lost. What is not removed will decay, add fuel to an even greater future fire threat, and in the process, release the greenhouse gases that the trees gathered and stored during the centuries they were alive. When all of the trees across the tens of thousands of acres burned in each of these mega fires are left to rot, millions of tons of destructive greenhouse gases are released into the upper atmosphere. These are the same volatile organic compounds that have been identified as some of the most damaging elements we can put into our air. In contrast, trees harvested soon after the fire is out drive the economic engine that employs people, provides revenue for the critical restoration and reforestation, and can provide dollars for local government services such as schools, public safety, health and social services, libraries, and good roads. When the harvested trees are made into lumber for homes, construction, and furniture, the carbon remains in storage instead of going up into the atmosphere. Dead and dying timber becomes a magnet for insect infestation. These infestations can be so large that they do not end with the burned forest, but progress into the surrounding green forest, killing even more trees, which then become even more fodder for the next fire. In absence of prompt active management and reforestation, invasive brush can dominate the landscape. That brush can retard and even prohibit the growth of the new forest and compound the fuel load for a future fire. When that fire does occur, the dense brush and dead fallen trees on the ground create a firestorm, burning hotter and even more damaging to the soil than the first fire. These damaged soils can repel water, lack the nutrients and organic matter needed by seedlings, and hinder the ability of new trees to grow. While mega fires can be so devastating, not all fires are bad. When the conditions are right, fire has been used for decades as an effective way to reduce fuels on the forest floor, burn back brush and dead grass to stimulate the new growth desired by wildlife, thinning out the younger, overstocked areas of our forests, and maintain the fire resiliency we seek. Controlled burning can be a powerful and useful tool, used in the right places, at the right time, by the professionals we charge with managing these forests. The desired result is to lessen the potential for the large, devastating mega fires we have been experiencing these past few decades. Recovery after mega fires is not only possible, but can greatly expedite the restoration and creation of all of the benefits of a healthy forest ecosystem. One fine example is Oregon's Tillamook State Forest. After repeated massive fires in the mid-20th century, state, county government, private companies, and even schoolchildren worked together to restore and replant over 500 square miles of burned-over landscape. As a result of those efforts, today, we have prime fish and wildlife habitat for salmon, trout, elk, and owls, plus camping, hiking and biking trails, healthy growing forests that gather and store carbon, and sustainable timber harvests that supports local economies, funds schools and local governments, and supports thousands of family wage jobs across the region. Without the vision of those state and local leaders just a few decades ago, very little, if any, of this would be possible today. Nearly every year for the past 20 years, we have watched millions of acres of our public forests burned by mega fires. We spent hundreds of millions, even billions of dollars fighting them. Yet, when the fire is out, a mere fraction of the killed trees and lost value is ever recovered, with little or no effort to restore the burned landscape. What can you do? Contact your elected federal, state, and local officials. Tell them these federal lands and once treasured forests are too valuable to simply walk away. Future generations are depending upon you to take action. For more information, visit us on Facebook at Communities for Healthy Forests.
For the properly-prepared explorer, winter is a spectacular time at Crater Lake National Park. There's abundant opportunities for winter recreation, for varied skill levels, and varied experiences. Come on up to Crater Lake. It's a beautiful place to enjoy the winter. We get tons of snow. It's beautiful snow. But realize it is a national park and it is a wilderness area, so when you come up here, be prepared. We've got a lot of obvious hazards here, but I think one of the greatest hidden hazards is that the weather can change really fast. It can be a total bluebird sunny day. Next thing you know, the clouds will roll in, reduce visibility to almost nothing. You'll get driving snow, blasting winds, and it can create a whiteout. And that's really dangerous to be out in, especially with the edge of the caldera right here. Additionally, the entire caldera acts as a giant terrain trap. A terrain trap is where all of the snow and rocks will funnel into a single location as you go further and deeper into the caldera. It's about as dangerous as it gets down there. The slopes are so steep. In the winter, they're fully covered in snow. So if you started to slip, you'd have no way to stop yourself. It's just a straight drop about 1,000 feet down to the edge of the lake. And the water in the lake is going to be about the freezing temperature, and it's hundreds of feet deep. So once you get in there, there's really no way to get back out. There are also hazards such as avalanches and cornices throughout the park. A cornice is a formation of snow created by wind. It often forms over steep slopes and can be overhanging. They can easily be broken through if you're not paying attention. Most of our popular skiing areas and our popular snowshoeing areas are either on or below avalanche terrain. So you want to be aware of the edges. You want to be aware whether you're above or below avalanche terrain. It's incredibly hazardous, and we do get avalanches all the time here. Crater Lake Rangers and ski patrol members do perform backcountry winter rescues. We're all trained as medical providers and for search and rescue. So if you're out just a short distance on the trail, we might be able to get to you pretty quick. But if for some reason, you go over the edge and you get injured, we're going to have to assemble a technical rescue team. And it could be a long time before we get down there to get you out. You really need to be prepared to be self-sufficient. And if you get into a bad situation, you really need to know how to rescue yourself. Well, if you know you're going to come up here for the winter time, either to snowshoe or just to come up and visit, a few things you really want to do is you want to check the weather beforehand, figure out what the conditions are expected to be up here. You also want to look at our webcams and see what the current conditions are, what the snowpack looks like. And when you do get up here, make sure you take that extra minute or two to talk to someone from the visitor center or someone from where you rent your snowshoes, and see what the hazards are out there, what the conditions being reported back are. And then just be extra prepared. So bring extra food, extra water, extra clothing, because things can change fast out here, and you really need to be ready for it.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
We have these parks which are set up to protect and preserve biodiversity. That's challenging under any circumstances. But it certainly is almost impossible if you don't know what the actual biodiversity that's in your park or the area that you're trying to conserve is.
A bio blitz is a celebration of biodiversity. Biodiversity is the variety of life in an area. We don't know how much life and what types of life are here at Crater Lake National Park. The big, obvious things, we know about. But a bio blitz is where we go out and look for a particular type of organism. This year, we're looking for beetles or the order Coleoptera.
The wealth of biodiversity that are in these parks, 99% of it is something that could fit in your hand.
We can't save what we don't know exists. So if there's a beetle species out there that's very important and we don't know about it, we can't do anything to help it. That is the ultimate goal of the bio blitz. It's a way that citizens can come here. We have volunteers that are here who are actually giving this information. They're using their time to help the scientists build a greater picture of what kind of beetles are here in this park.
Getting this sort of baseline data of what biodiversity is there not only shows us what's there, which is just intrinsically interesting for its own purpose, but it also begins to set a baseline. And that baseline data set is what we then can use. And not just scientists, but the general public and those land managers, the stakeholders in that bio blitz, can use those observations then on into the future to understand if things are changing.
It's not so much about counting number of species. It's more about seeing a fuller picture of the biodiversity. And the biodiversity is the variety of different types of organisms, different types of species.
I do believe that in their past bio blitzes, that they have expanded the number of things they now had recorded from the park, but also confirmed that some of the things that were reported historically are still present. So even if it's not a new discovery for the park, it still creates another piece of data that tells us, yes, that thing still lives here and is still thriving or maybe struggling, but we begin to learn something about it. I think that has an intrinsic value to the park for its long-term future, but it also just has an intrinsic social value. When you ask questions about why do we have these parks? And there's lots of ways to answer that question. But one of them is that the parks are these areas where we, where we go to appreciate the wildlife there. And this is a way of tapping into some of that wildlife at all sorts of different levels. One of the key things besides the biology that's involved in these bio blitzes is the interaction with the public and the opportunity to educate the public about the biodiversity around them.
The citizen scientists are here working alongside professional scientists. And that allows them not just to connect with science here at the park, but connect with the greater scientific community. It's a, it's a real positive thing. We see all ages coming here and, and they're just acting like kids, out searching for bugs, but they're doing real science at the same time. It's a great connection between this amazing resource and the people that live around it.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are. And I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire. So we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the National Forest- The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forest down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded. We're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go. We just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm going to be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's going to benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all get shipped away. And so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langloes is less than 500 people. It's very small. So we have to bring in tourists, and being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began dragonfly farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh, my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my day job, and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're going to send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know what anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan. And we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang up last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're going to promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way, and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing, and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have and don't try to be something that you're not. It's going to be hard. It's going to take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
National parks are one of America's crowning achievements. After all, it was in this country that the idea of setting areas aside for preservation was born. They are a symbol of democracy and exist as places where one can appreciate the beauty and complexity of the natural world, free of human influence. In the past, national parks faced challenges brought on primarily by the industries and practices that threatened them. Today, similar challenges persist, as well as some new ones. High up in the Cascades, Crater Lake National Park remains a pristine natural area enjoyed by visitors from throughout the world. But in recent years, new circumstances have come to endanger the ecosystem of the park. Invasive plant species are beginning to spread and threaten the park's natural biodiversity. An invasive species is an organism that did not originate in an ecosystem and is often introduced by humans. In recent years, Crater Lake National Park biologists have documented a rise in the number of non-native plant species found within the park. Invasive plant species have various ways of spreading throughout Crater Lake National Park. Roads that have been built create pathways for seeds that may stick on tires and get thrown to the side of the road. From the roadways, visitors come from far and wide to see one of the world's natural wonders. With each visitor, the risk of introducing new species also increases. Many invasive plant species have evolved sophisticated methods of distribution through the development of various adaptations to their seeds. These adaptations allow some species to let the wind and even animal life do all the heavy lifting for them. As seeds needle their way through clothing and animal fur, they are carried and then dropped in various places around the park. There are many reasons why new species are entering the park at an increasing rate. One of the factors responsible are the effects brought on by climate change. Due to warming winters, the snow-dominated season of Crater Lake National Park is becoming shorter. Snowpack, that is normally around for most of the year, shortens the period of humid impacts, such as high levels of summer visitation and infrastructure maintenance and enhancements. With climate change increasing the frequency and severity of drought and lengthening the snow-free period, the factors that are disturbing the natural environment are amplifying. Snow melt, that would linger for most of the year, is melting much sooner than usual. Snowpack acts as a barrier to both plant and animal species. Native plant species have adapted to this environment and are used to completing their life cycles during short growing seasons. With the lengthening of growing seasons, native plant species are now vulnerable to increasing competition from invasive plant species. The risk of forest fires increases with rising temperatures as well. As growing seasons lengthen, so do fire seasons. Areas affected by forest fires open up new habitats for invasive plants to move in, creating areas where non-native plants can find solid footing in the competition against their native neighbors. Newly introduced annual grasses fill spaces of forests and meadows and act as a medium for fires, allowing them to spread farther and more easily than before. This means that not only are invasive plant species altering the existing environment, they create a domino effect that can speed up the process of change in the park. In the last three years, 25 non-native plant species have been discovered. With every coming season, these numbers are expected to increase. Amid growing challenges and limited resources, the invasive vegetation management team has been forced to prioritize the most aggressive species in the park. These Crater Lake National Park biologists are controlling non-native thistles from a remote area inside the western boundary of the park. These thistles were discovered late in the season, and park biologists are removing the seed heads so they will not spread farther and establish more infestation sites. Given how large an area these plants can envelop, controlling invasive plants can be a meticulous process, but it is the best way to ensure that these plants aren't able to spread further into the park. Road sides are another area of focus, as they create literal highways for invasive plant species to take hold. By controlling invasive plants near the park boundary and along roadside, park biologists hope to reduce the amount of species entering and spreading in order to protect and maintain the natural state of the park.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sandcastles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun, to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is, and what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official State Maritime Museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach, or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds in offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But while cautiously, these organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The central coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns, and as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your all-American road. to your all-American road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Fowlweather, a balsate outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition earned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away. Or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays. And don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
Now, all four of our otters were rescued otters. They were found out in the wild.
For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yahats. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay, where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yahats is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff, and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hacita Head Lighthouse to the sea lion caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rodendrons along the roadside. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayuslaw River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed Sport is at the center of the Oregon Dunes. But you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed Sport hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end, and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayuslaw River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston to Bandon tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific Coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Bandon. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The Wild Coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States, and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this all-American road home. Small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Nea County Mountain. You can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There's little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shining stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves and the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So, you've toured nature's finest art museum. You've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria, ride a horse along the waves near Florence, pet a baby tiger near Bandon, hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature, and you don't have huge numbers of people, but you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
We've got a lot of obvious hazards here, but I think one of the greatest hidden hazards is that the weather can change really fast. It can be a total bluebird sunny day. Next thing you know, the clouds will roll in, reduce visibility to almost nothing. You'll get driving snow, blasting wind, and it can create a whiteout, and that's really dangerous to be out in, especially with the edge of the caldera right here.
There are also hazards such as avalanches and cornices throughout the park. A cornice is a formation of snow created by wind. It often forms over steep slopes and can be overhanging. They can easily be broken through if you're not paying attention.
Most of our popular skiing areas and our popular snowshoeing areas are either on or below avalanche terrain. So you want to be aware of the edges. You want to be aware whether you're above or below avalanche terrain. It's incredibly hazardous, and we do get avalanches all the time here.
Unstable snow cornices can kill. Cornices are difficult to detect and can collapse at any time. Stay 100 feet, 30 meters, back from edge of the caldera. Trees can be dangerous in deep winter snow. Tree wells are large cavities around trees that can be three to 10 feet deep. People can become trapped in tree wells and die. Tree bombs are large clumps of snow and ice that fall from tree branches. Tree bombs can injure or kill a person. Use map and stay on the trails. Don't venture off-trail unless you have a plan and are prepared to rescue yourself. Search and rescue response may not take place until the following day. Stay with a group and let a responsible person know your plans. Leave a detailed itinerary with someone you know. If there is an emergency, they might be the only person who can tell the National Park Service where you are.
There's something about having land and sea. Never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you. To the tops of the trees, along secluded beaches, or into more wild and scenic rivers than anywhere else in the western United States. We're the closest place to the sunset while still keeping your feet dry and a destination where anyone can begin. We share more than we keep, so you can see more than you imagined. This is a place you have to touch, hold, and feel to believe. The entire shoreline of the West Coast's best coast is open to you, and playgrounds made of forests are waiting for you. Escape to Curry County and don't leave anything out.
We've got a lot of obvious hazards here, but I think one of the greatest hidden hazards is that the weather can change really fast. It can be a total bluebird sunny day. Next thing you know, the clouds will roll in, reduce visibility to almost nothing. You'll get driving snow, blasting wind, and it can create a whiteout, and that's really dangerous to be out in, especially with the edge of the caldera right here.
There are also hazards such as avalanches and cornices throughout the park. A cornice is a formation of snow created by wind. It often forms over steep slopes and can be overhanging. They can easily be broken through if you're not paying attention.
Most of our popular skiing areas and our popular snowshoeing areas are either on or below avalanche terrain. So you want to be aware of the edges. You want to be aware whether you're above or below avalanche terrain. It's incredibly hazardous, and we do get avalanches all the time here.
Roadway departure fatalities are a serious and often preventable problem in the United States. The Federal Highway Administration reports that 54% of all highway fatalities are caused by drivers leaving their lane of travel. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking a proactive approach to reduce this kind of tragedy by implementing a centerline and shoulder rumble strip program.
Rumble strips are one of the most low-cost, cost-effective countermeasures that we can apply across the system.
Rumble strips are grooved patterns on the roadway that make a rumbling sound and a physical vibration immediately warning inattentive drivers that they're leaving their driving lane. Rumble strips allow drivers to self-correct and avoid an accident.
About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are a vehicle can leave the lane to the right and hit a ditch or a rock or a tree, something like that, or cross over the centerline to the left and get in a head-on collision or a sideswipe meeting type crash.
Over an eight-year period, ODOT engineers studied segments of 16 different highways and concluded that rumble strips are highly effective at reducing lane departures.
We did a before and after crash analysis to find that we have reduced head-on fatalities by 40% with the installation of centerline rumble strips.
We've been trying to find a way to deal with a problem that seems to be increasing over the last 10 or 15 years with our drivers, and that's distracted driving. And there's a lot of things that cause distracted driving. All these distractions are things that make people take their attention away from where it should be.
Comparisons between other available safety features like guardrail and concrete barriers show that shoulder and centerline rumble strips are the most cost-effective safety treatment available.
We're finding that those are very effective in trying to make sure that when you do make that mistake, it's not the last mistake you make. They help bring your attention back to the driving task and bring you back to where you should be, focusing on being in the middle of your lane and being safe.
ODOT makes a conscious effort to use a bike-friendly rumble strip design where possible and installs 12-foot bike gaps every 48 feet of rumble strip. ODOT understands that rumble strips create a noise that can be disruptive for people who live near rural highways, and we're trying to address these concerns with different approaches.
For the noise, we're looking at some new designs. We're hoping that the new design rumble strip will be just as effective at saving people from making an error and much quieter, on the order of 10 times as quiet. And we're actually going to be installing our first full set of these style of rumble strips along 205 this summer.
So we recognize that noise is a concern, but one of the things I like to tell people is whenever you hear the sound of a rumble strip, it could be the sound of the life being saved of one of your loved ones.
Rumble strips are proven to save lives. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking the lead in implementing the sound of safety.
The goal of the Mountain Hemlock Phenology Project is to take the pulse of Crater Lake National Park. This project will span several years and track the change in spring tree growth over time. We don't just want to know if the timing of spring at Crater Lake is changing, we want to know why it might be changing, so we will also be measuring snow depth around the trees. This is how you'll take your measurements in the field. First, find a branch on the study tree and focus on the end of the branch. We're only going to measure a section the size of our hand. Next, look for the buds on the branches. They are really tiny. The dried-up tan buds that look like tiny pine cones are pollen cones from last year. Skip over these. You're going to be counting the tiny, unopened buds. Early in the season, these will all be tan color. Later in the spring, the cone buds will turn purple and the leaf buds will become hairy. You'll use your data sheet to identify and count the buds. These are the tree's new growth. Make sure you count carefully, the scientists are depending on you. After counting the buds, help the ranger take a snow depth measurement at your study tree. Park scientists think that climate change may be affecting plant growth at Crater Lake. Mountain hemlocks are a tree species adapted to deep snow, and snowfall has been decreasing at Crater Lake. What do you predict? Will trees surrounded by deeper snow produce more or less new growth than trees surrounded by less snow? On behalf of the National Park Service and the global scientific community, thank you for helping us take the pulse of Crater Lake National Park. for helping us take the pulse of Crater Lake National Park.
I love walking, it's what I do! So who better to share some tips to help keep your walks safe? Wait for the signal. Take in the sights and smells till you get the go-ahead to cross. Use intersections to cross, but when you can't, remember your training. Always look left, right, left. Show you want to cross and wait for all lanes of traffic to stop. And make eye contact so you know the driver sees you. Hi there. Good human, you get a treat when we get home.
How many letters?
Five letters.
Just think about what am I doing right now? Smile. Smile? Uh-huh.
Sign that doesn't have a rider on it, so we take our first test at this corporate speed limit of 12 miles per hour.
About weeks in Harley Bill are seeing more than their share of curvy roads these days. Their job is to drive every stretch of highway in Region 1 several times. All this driving back and forth...
The old limits were set back in the 1930s and 40s and were changed very little until just recently. So now our limits are taking into account newer vehicles, a little bit more aggressive driving style, and so those limits are going up.
And going up in a big way. This is Eric Leeming, a traffic devices engineer with ODOT. He's driving an ordinary car with some extraordinary tech onboard. A GPS device that records data as he maneuvers every curve in the road. Back at his office, Eric can upload the data recorded in the car and special software determines exactly the right speed for every curve, every time. Most speeds will increase by 5 to 10 miles per hour, but in some special cases, it's much higher.
The state has a deadline of 2019 from the Federal Highway Administration, but with 8,000 miles of roads to investigate and potentially thousands of signs to change, they're not wasting any time, they're getting out there right now.
About 800 signs along this section.
That's a lot of signs.
If it's a 35 mile an hour corner, you should be taking it at 35 miles an hour.
America's 3,069 county governments provide fundamental services for building healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. We are an intergovernmental partner, implementing federal and state policies at the local level, often under strict rules and funding constraints. County governments, through the National Association of Counties, engage federal policymakers on a range of issues like transportation, infrastructure, health care, public safety, and public lands management. All of these issues are vital to our nation's quality of life and our long-term prosperity. Decisions made by the White House, Congress, and federal courts have a major cascading impact on our ability to lead our communities and pursue a better future. Let's look at why federal policies matter to county government and why county government matters to America. Counties provide vital services that keep our communities thriving and secure. We own and maintain 45% of roads and four out of 10 bridges. We own more than a third of the airports and hundreds of hospitals and thousands of courthouses, jails, 911 call centers, and libraries. We play a critical role during emergencies like hurricanes, floods, and snowstorms. What if you called 911 and no one answered? What if you couldn't reach your medical facility because roads and bridges were in disrepair or never built? County governments are an indispensable part of the infrastructure and services that keep residents safe and connected. But with very limited revenue options under most state constitutions and laws, counties must make every penny count in order to fulfill federal and state mandates and required responsibilities. Nothing is more basic in our society than essential public facilities like schools, hospitals, airports, jails, bridges, and other infrastructure. Yet proposals have surfaced to eliminate or scale back tax-exempt municipal bonds. For over a century, municipal bonds have been the lifeblood for our nation's public infrastructure, helping finance more than $3.7 trillion in essential projects. If tax-exempt municipal bonds were eliminated or scaled back, county governments and our residents would face billions in new costs when financing vital facilities. Additionally, counties rely on MAP-21 and the Federal Highway Trust Fund to complement local transportation financing resources. With growing demands and mounting costs, we need a reliable federal partner to invest with us in our nation's economic growth and competitiveness. We need a long-term legislative solution with increased funding to ensure continued success in operating our nation's transportation system. Counties face further revenue losses each year because billions of dollars in e-commerce sales tax revenue isn't collected. The Marketplace Fairness Act would enable states and localities to collect existing already owed taxes. It would also level the playing field between many internet retailers who don't collect sales taxes and Main Street businesses that do. County governments provide support services to federal public lands, touching 700 million annual visitors. We lead search and rescue operations, fight fires, protect the public's health, and maintain roads. Federal lands cover nearly one-third of the U.S. and impact 69% of counties. Because federal land is exempt from local property taxes, counties depend on PILT, the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Program, to provide essential services. The Secure Rural Schools Program provides assistance to rural counties and school districts affected by the decline in revenue from timber harvests on federal land. Decisions to cut or delay funding both programs undermine our ability to provide services and maintain public lands. Our intergovernmental partnerships don't end with legislation because counties also implement and comply with federal and state regulations. When considering environmental protections, we know our communities and care deeply about the environment. We need a stronger voice in shaping common sense regulations that protect communities while also promoting economic growth. This is why NACO secured significant improvements to FEMA's flood insurance program and is pushing back on the waters of the U.S.-proposed rule. Our message: Federal policies matter to county government and county government matters to America. Every level of government must work together to shape policies that improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whether it's building and maintaining infrastructure, providing essential services, or fostering economic growth, counties are on the front line serving their citizens. NACO stands ready to work with the administration and Congress to make our nation's communities healthier, safer, and more vibrant places to live and work.
Counties matter. Counties serve nearly every American every day. Urban, suburban, and rural, counties work with states, the federal government, and other public and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. Whether you're commuting to work or shipping goods around the globe, counties matter. Counties own and maintain 45% of the nation's roads and four out of 10 bridges. And we're involved in nearly a third of public airports and transit systems. Counties matter when Americans need us the most. Counties matter because we support smart, fair, and effective criminal justice systems. We help fund police and sheriff's departments. We own and operate local jails, 911 call centers, and mental health facilities. Counties create healthy communities. We invest more than $80 billion in hospitals and medical services each year. Counties matter because we invest in the lives of residents of all ages, improving their quality of life where they live and work. Counties are the building blocks of state, regional, and national economies. We support housing, recreation, and economic development. And we do so much more. From issuing birth certificates to administering elections, counties employ more than 3.5 million people. In total, we invest more than half a trillion dollars in our residents and our communities every year. Counties provide essential services we all depend on every day. Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country, with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities, and the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways: keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound.
Yeah, I just picked her up. We should be there in 20 minutes.
Who is it? Oh, it's him. Where is he?
I know.
When a large forest fire breaks out, potentially threatening lives, homes, wildlife, and thousands of acres of forest land, the news coverage is immediate and consistent. Interviews with homeowners, firefighters, medical aid providers, and others continues nonstop until the fire is sufficiently contained. At that point, the cameras are turned off, the interviews are over, and it's on to the The images of catastrophic wildfire with its ferocity and devastating impact on the land hold the interest and attention of the public. However, there is an equally important story occurring on that same landscape after the fire is contained, mopped up, and finally declared out that the public seldom sees. The frequency and size of these mega fires on federal forest land has increased significantly over the last few decades. All too often, what is left in their wake is a vast sea of dead charred trees. Unfortunately, because of a maze of confusing and often contradictory rules and regulations, very little rehabilitation or reforestation occurs after these fires. The result of this neglect, in many cases, is as devastating as the fire itself. Here's why. Even in the hottest, severe fires, most of the dead trees remain standing, the wood not damaged by the fire, still suitable and valuable for lumber. But as the insects move in, within months, the dead and dying trees begin to deteriorate and decompose. Eventually, all of the economic value is lost. What is not removed will decay, add fuel to an even greater future fire threat, and in the process, release the greenhouse gases that the trees gathered and stored during the centuries they were alive. When all of the trees across the tens of thousands of acres burned in each of these mega fires are left to rot, millions of tons of destructive greenhouse gases are released into the upper atmosphere. These are the same volatile organic compounds that have been identified as some of the most damaging elements we can put into our air. In contrast, trees harvested soon after the fire is out drive the economic engine that employs people, provides revenue for the critical restoration and reforestation, and can provide dollars for local government services such as schools, public safety, health and social services, libraries, and good roads. When the harvested trees are made into lumber for homes, construction, and furniture, the carbon remains in storage instead of going up into the atmosphere. Dead and dying timber becomes a magnet for insect infestation. These infestations can be so large that they do not end with the burned forest, but progress into the surrounding green forest, killing even more trees, which then become even more fodder for the next fire. In absence of prompt active management and reforestation, invasive brush can dominate the landscape. That brush can retard and even prohibit the growth of the new forest and compound the fuel load for a future fire. When that fire does occur, the dense brush and dead fallen trees on the ground create a firestorm, burning hotter and even more damaging to the soil than the first fire. These damaged soils can repel water, lack the nutrients and organic matter needed by seedlings, and hinder the ability of new trees to grow. While mega fires can be so devastating, not all fires are bad. When the conditions are right, fire has been used for decades as an effective way to reduce fuels on the forest floor, burn back brush and dead grass to stimulate the new growth desired by wildlife, thinning out the younger, overstocked areas of our forests, and maintain the fire resiliency we seek. Controlled burning can be a powerful and useful tool, used in the right places, at the right time, by the professionals we charge with managing these forests. The desired result is to lessen the potential for the large devastating mega fires we have been experiencing these past few decades. Recovery after mega fires is not only possible, but can greatly expedite the restoration and creation of all of the benefits of a healthy forest ecosystem. One fine example is Oregon's Tillamook State Forest. After repeated massive fires in the mid-20th century, state, county government, private companies, and even schoolchildren worked together to restore and replant over 500 square miles of burned-over landscape. As a result of those efforts, today we have prime fish and wildlife habitat for salmon, trout, elk, and owls, plus camping, hiking and biking trails, healthy growing forests that gather and store carbon, and sustainable timber harvests that supports local economies, funds schools and local governments, and supports thousands of family wage jobs across the region. Without the vision of those state and local leaders just a few decades ago... Without the vision of those staid and local leaders just a few decades ago, very little, if any, of this would be possible today. Nearly every year for the past 20 years, we have watched millions of acres of our public forests burned by mega fires. We spent hundreds of millions, even billions of dollars fighting them, yet when the fire is out, a mere fraction of the killed trees and lost value is ever recovered, with little or no effort to restore the burned landscape. What can you do? Contact your elected federal, state, and local officials. Tell them these federal lands and once treasured forests are too valuable to simply walk away. Future generations are depending upon you to take action. For more information, visit us on Facebook at Communities for Healthy Forests.
All right, coming back into regular session. It is 12:30 on January 7. After coming out of executive session, we are going to proceed as directed with the things that we talked about in executive session. And can I get a motion?
So move Mr. Chair.
A second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Call for the question.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned.